Superintendent's report.
The following is the Pennsylvania Department of Education update. The Legislative Budget and Finance Committee provided the following information in regards to the interim report on Act 48, particularly the cost and benefits of the program. A final report is due in March. Among the interim reports finding are, almost all states have continuing professional development requirements for teachers to maintain active teaching certificates, and more than half require that they be met every five years. Continuing professional development helps promote teacher quality and can lead to improved student performance. It also helps meet federal and state mandates and support state and local education reform initiatives. The current Act 48 requirements allow professional educators to comply with the 180 hours of continuing professional education in a variety of ways. Act 48's requirement for professional development are not the only professional development requirements provided for in the public school code and the regulations of the State Board of Education. Therefore, many programs and hours utilized for Act 48 may serve other purposes. Statewide, the total number of Act 48 hours per school district professional educator substantially declined from 2009 to 10, to 2011 and 12, when the Act 48 moratorium was in effect. Most professional educators met Act 48 requirements through activities offered through the Pennsylvania Department of Education, the intermediate units, and in particular, through our public school system. The teaching and learning subject area accounted for the largest share of reported Act 48 hours for classroom teachers, administrators, and supervisors. The final report will include the cost of compliance with Act 48 for both the Pennsylvania Department of Education and school districts. I bring this to light because with budgetary restrictions in all of our 500 school districts, that is something that obviously is imperative as we move forward, to make sure that we have a balance with professional development and to make sure that it's done in a cost-effective way. In addition, the Pennsylvania Department of Education is now seeking a federal government waiver. Pennsylvania Educational Secretary Ron Timalas said last week that his department will seek a waiver from the federal No Child Left Behind legislation, commonly known as the NCLB, which is in its current form, a cause for all students to test proficiency in reading and math on annual state achievement exams by 2014. Earlier this year, Mr. Timalas said he was waiting for the outcome of the presidential and congressional elections to see if there was a possibility for new legislation. Pennsylvania currently is one of only six states that has not applied for the waiver. And when we think about the No Child Left Behind, I think it's really important to think about what it constitutes, and it's improved the focus on Title I of ESEA, and that's the Elementary Secondary Educational Act. It's increasing Title I funding to make sure that our students of all needs are that they're met, to provide sufficient resources to serve all eligible students, to focus on federal accountability on the achievement of students served by Title I programs, and to engage and educate and support parents as partners. Another component is to improve the implementation of the Title I program, and to improve the accuracy and instructional usefulness of Title I accountability. And lastly, but just as importantly, is improve teacher quality throughout our state. Thank you very much.
Are there any other communications this evening?
No.
Okay, going down the reports. The IU, documents back.
November is the only month of the year where we do not have an IU board meeting. Our next meeting is next Wednesday, so there's nothing new to report on that venue. But I would say, a reminder, is that the IU has a number of contracts that they're currently in negotiation, and it's moving along favorably, and of course, cannot disclose what the actual numbers are, but I will give you the hint that it's much, much less than 6 percent a year.
Very good. Thank you. Well, I remember here, CIT.
CIT, two things on CIT. One, they do have their open house this evening, which I hope will ship very well, give people an opportunity to come in, look at the shops, the availability, the offerability, and I think that's excellent to do. Also, as like many places, they will be in negotiations this week with the Teachers' Bargaining Committee. That will start and kick off this week, so I'll keep you abreast of that as things progress from that angle. Thank you very much.
Community College meeting tomorrow night?
Yeah, I have something to add to it. Along with the open house, the CIT Foundation has ticket sales and Chinese auction, which is one of their big fundraisers. This past year, I just signed the last check. They gave away three or four scholarships, and two of them were tool scholarships, which I think I love. I mean, when you give a kid a tool scholarship, they get a job in a particular factory or union, and they need $500 to $700 worth of tools. We're probably the only school that does that. We give them a check for what they need for tools, and they have to, but they have to buy them at a certain store, so they don't get the money cash. And I signed the last one as treasurer just this Monday. So it is a good, and our open house is tonight, and it was a conflict because we don't normally meet on Wednesday, because I think if we weren't meeting tonight, that some of us would be up there.
Yep. Okay, thank you. As I said, Community College is tomorrow night, so Legislative.
No.
Okay. Student Rapp, and Mr. Cuck?
It's my pleasure once again to introduce our Student Council Executive Board President, Gene Bobb.
Thank you, Mr. Cuck. A few things. Recap on Turkey Week. As we all know, football team won, we won the blood drive, the police game, we won that as well, and Powder Puff also won, so it's safe to say that we did have a clean sweep for Turkey Week. For school environment, the message board has again been updated. If any clubs or activities would like to have their message on there, please contact us, the executive board. For community service, we're working on an upcoming food drive and our Safe Harbor trip, which was rescheduled to December 18th, 2012. And lastly, our winter formal is on Saturday, December 8th, at the State Theater, from 7:00 to 11:00 p.m., and ticket sales will continue until Friday of this week. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, PTA, Dr. Tara Gilligan. Nobody here for the PTA this evening, okay? Mrs. Bridhead, Jenna?
Good evening. We are currently in the cold and flu season in schools, and so we're encouraging students to use proper hand washing techniques as well as hand sanitizer whenever possible, because what ends up happening is we all end up getting sick, so I am the next victim of the cold. So, it's been a busy month for us. November, we had to do a lot of rescheduling and reorganizing due to Sandy's visit to town, which kind of pushed things off and back, so we readjusted our calendars and we are moving forward. Eastern Area Education Association is hosting the Second Annual Luminary Night on December 16th. Luminary kits can be purchased through our office. You can see me, and I can get you some information. We're excited to be doing this once again this year. We learned a lot last year, and our office is a lot cleaner, and I don't have sand all over the place. We just had our meeting on Monday, and this month, we do have a Teacher of the Month, and we do have a Partner in Education. Our Partner in Education, and I'm not quite sure he knows this information yet, our Partner in Education this month is Mr. John Border. He is a security guard at the 788 Building. He's been nominated quite a few times this year, and not only do the teachers and other adults in the district appreciate him, we just got this information. It's been a long couple of days. Not only do the teachers and adults appreciate him, but so do the kids. And our Teacher of the Month is a high school special education teacher, Ms. Barb Boyer, and she's also received quite a few nominations this year. So usually, our board meetings don't coincide with each other like this. Usually, there's a little bit of breathing room, but not this month. Other than that, we're getting ready for holiday concerts and jingle belling. I will be emailing all of the school board members on January 15th. The gifted program is organizing a day of service, and the Martin Luther King Project, where the students used to read to elementary students. There's sure we don't have the high school students' availability to read to the elementary students, so we're looking for some guest readers. So you'll be receiving an email from me on that. Other than that, that's all I have. Have a happy holiday season.
You too. Thank you.
Luminary kits are $10 like last year?
They're $15 this year.
$15.
I will send you an email with all the information.
Okay, please do that. I bought one last year.
Okay, and Ellen Jones?
Good evening. As you all know, I'm a bus driver, Sandy's a bus driver, and we have another bus driver here, and I'm going to bring the same subject up that Sandy did for me when I was sick last month, and that is the ban on us giving the kids a treat. First off, in the newspaper, it states that a bus driver gave a student a candy or whatever, peanut butter, and it caused an allergenic reaction. Okay, Mr. Simonetta, I don't know where you received that information, but I checked with both supervisors, and if that was, if that did happen, they were never informed of that, okay, because they would have taken the proper precautions also. So I don't know who conveyed that information to you, okay? I'm sure somebody did, okay? Second of all, there was a statement also made that we don't know who has what. I'll call somebody out on that also. I just don't know who I'm calling out, because I myself signed at least 25 504s, okay? What is it, Chapter 15 Service Plan? I myself signed 25 of them. So we do know who is and who is not allergic, or what somebody may need special care in. So we are educated in that manner, okay? And all we're asking is let these kids be kids. You know, if somebody has a problem, I had a young man on my bus three years ago, diabetic, juvenile diabetes, okay? Mom said to me, whatever you do with the rest of them, you include him. He knows what he can and cannot do. And with that, I'm asking that you please notify us whether we can give, we are giving you all a gift tonight, whether we can give our students a gift, also for Christmas. And I would like to point out the smiles and the appreciation that it has given just from you.
Right, Ellen? Whoops. I don't.
Don't start charging.
Yeah, they do. The only thing I, the only thing I would recommend, and I don't know if Mr. Simonetta did, is that peanut butter is something that, that's something you shouldn't give out.
Absolutely.
Because there are kids that are allergic, but want to eat that.
Thank you, Sandy.
Yes, but I would also like to, as she's doing that, point out that the high school students, and we don't want it stopped, okay, get on our buses with ice cream cones, candy, not only candy for themselves, but they're bringing on these suitcase, okay, that they're actually selling on our buses. I guess it's the ban.
Yeah.
Okay, middle school. Well, actually, for the high school, I'll finish with, I have two young ones who I had to stop because they insisted on, keep bringing me an ice cream sandwich. Please, no more, okay? But in the middle school, same thing. They're bringing on, out of the building, ice cream, soda, candy, okay? So it is being offered there. We also had another way around it last year. One of our drivers offered, this is what he wanted to do, was treat everybody on his bus to a district lunch, what the district serves. And that principal, who is a Palmer principal, still there, told him, no way. So what did he do? He sent a letter home with all the parents, and he took them out for pizza instead. Cost them a pretty penny. We don't make that much. So I'd ask that you reconsider this.
And one thing I think you have to know, and you probably do realize, it's not the board that, you know, that was more of an administrative action taken, and I think the best recommendation is that if not through your supervisors, that discussion should probably occur with Mr. Simonetta, and, you know, maybe you can come to some kind of an agreement of something that is more acceptable, because today, in this age, you know, just because of how lawsuits and everything else develop, you have to be safe. And so, both from a school district and from a personal point of view. So I would like to encourage that, though. Talk, you know, talk to Mr. Mike there.
Okay, are you also then saying that we should stop the students from bringing on their candy that they're selling also? Because that may be a danger also.
No, I mean, that's, again, the board's not making that decision. That is an administrative decision of what they're doing. So that's what I'm saying. I suggest, you know, again, through the supervisors, supervisors and Mike, that you go and talk with them.
We will do that.
Thank you.
I'll let you know how that ends up. Thank you. Hopefully, by next week.
I'm sure he'll keep us posted.
I could call you if I wanted to donate some candy to.
Oh, we don't need that. No, we do that ourselves.
I know, but I mean, if I wanted to donate.
Whatever. We'll find, we'll find somebody who'll bring it to the board.
Okay.
Okay. I'm varying a little bit from the agenda here. At the last meeting, and so this is a follow-up update, there was a question about class size and everything that was brought up by Dr. Gilligan, representing the PTA. And at that time, and we had received some information, Mr. First was in the middle of going through the normal routine of looking and reviewing these numbers, and I asked him if he could give us a quick overview this evening. Steve?
Yes, it was a very timely thing that came up about class size, because as you know, or as I think I had made clear through a memorandum, in the past, class sizes, as our policy says, once they reach 25, should be monitored, and after 20 days, there should be some sort of a review. It's specified that we should use a parent, a teacher, and also involve the principal. In the past, those reviews were not really conducted until approximately mid-year, and that was due to the fact that, number one, our class sizes did not reach that size until then, in some cases, and we really didn't have any sort of data, other than maybe the opinions of people involved, to try to make a scientific inquiry as to whether or not class sizes were truly affecting learning. And that normally occurred January or after. By that time, K through 4, and this is really specific to K through 4, they had data through DIBELS that they could see, you know, if there were problems with the process. This year, however, as you know, we started the school year with some cases having 25 as a class size. At that time, to try to, you know, even after 20 days, even in early September, we really don't have very much data at all to make any sort of a decision. But I had said to them that we need to, you know, get the process in motion. The principals wanted to wait, and I said, really, I don't want to wait past, really, November to conduct our, I mean, at least our first review. At that point in time, I told the principals that even though they may not have all the data that they require, to at least begin to take a look at that and hold your, what I would call your first round of reviews. That is underway. We have a few of them completed. But I want to read to you some of the comments that were made, because I find them interesting, and why maybe, you know, this year was a little bit different in terms of trying to get this off the ground. One of the comments that was made in the report was that the teachers and principal felt it was too early to tell if class size was affecting student progress. They also said, in terms of individual data, both in math and literacy assessments, the results, as of yet, are inconclusive. Now, I'm not saying that this is true for everybody, but these were sort of themes that I was able to extract. They said that the committee is in agreement that the consideration of additional data points in January will yield a better dataset for the determination of the status of individual student growth. We have had some cases where there were the feeling that maybe there may have been impacted learning problems, but that they were not significant at this point. Some other comments that were made were, individual growth reports will require January assessments to be administered for a more accurate picture. So I wanted to share that with you, that we were not trying to avoid the reviews, but we were trying to make them a little more scientific, so we had proper data. We may have done them a little early, but I didn't think it was appropriate to continue to wait past November, so we did get that started. And then it did coincide with the comments made by PTA President Tara Gillian, who is concerned that we're not doing the reviews. So I wanted to assure everyone that we are underway with those reviews, and that we will be looking at data again in January. And I want to make it very clear, and I think the principals wanted to make this very clear to you also, is that they feel that they're watching this constantly. Through their walkthrough process, through ongoing, just formative assessment that is being done in the classroom, they and teachers are watching to see how the impacts are with, you know, the entire learning, or teaching and learning process. So they wanted to assure you that even if they don't do just a one-time review, that this is being reviewed and monitored on an almost daily basis, and that they are certainly concerned, and that they will make certain adjustments that they can make without adding staff, but that there may be requests for that down the line. That was my update. If you have any questions, I'd be, I'd be more than glad to ask, or I would be more than glad to answer.
I see Bob has a hand.
Just a comment, Steve. For the board members that perhaps didn't see, there was a very fine article in the Morning Call, co-authored by our Mr. Adam Clark.
Yeah, I saw that.
And I thought that was a really good overview of this topic area, and it was balanced. And you ought to indicate to the board, the comments of the Lehigh University professor who applauded you in this district for trying to make database decisions.
Yes.
I think it's very curious that people think that there's some magic at 25 students per class. I seriously doubt that. So, good job with the update, and please keep us informed.
Sure. And just one thing I'll add to that is, there probably will be a recommendation to the board at some point, maybe to make a change, but that it will, I think it'll be something that'll be more intensive than simply when it hits 25, we're going to do a review. That there'll be an ongoing process, and they'll explain that process, but that'll be for, you know, another time. We can certainly talk about that.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Again, I varied, but normally, we would do this at a committee meeting, but since it came up, I wanted to address it.
I think it was fine. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Steve.
Okay. The Standing Committee, the next one is next Monday at 6:00 p.m. And at this point, open the floor for anybody in the public that would like to address any items. Yes, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. There's two items under personnel I think deserve attention. One, because I think it represents a creative step forward in pushing the envelope and keeping your costs down, and that is, you're bringing a professional psychologist onboard at a very, very reasonable hourly rate. He's required to do all of the duties that are set forth in the job description. You're limiting how long he's to be here. You probably have pushed the envelope beyond where the envelope is, but I commend you for pushing it, because if nobody complains, you've pushed it. And I'm going back to some days when Dr. Volcano was at City Hall in the old location. The city treasurers were actually an employee of the school district for pension plan purposes, and some of the solicitors were onboard for health plans and pension plans, and the state corrected that and took them off, or marginally off. And the state also allowed you to take out, more recently, by application, part-time employees. But in this case, you've pushed the envelope considerably and saved yourself a lot of money. It's too bad we can't hire a lot of other people the same way, because apparently, it only applies to psychologists, doctors, dentists, lawyers, and tax collectors. And, you know, I think we should add a lot more people to creative employment. But on the negative side of the equation, as a taxpayer, I'm doing a slow burn, because I noticed that we're hiring substitutes at the rate of $79,041 and similar high numbers. One extremely reliable source said, Mr. Anderson, of course, you're wrong, it's in the contract. I read the contract about 10 times, and I can't find it. I'm willing to stand corrected if somebody can show me where it is. Somebody else said, Mr. Anderson, of course, you're wrong, it's in the contract, because we're required to do it after 45 days. And I said, I can read English, to which I could say, anybody who got past sixth grade would merely rotate positions every 44 days. And that's not rocket science, and it's done routinely by other people. But I don't believe that person is correct either. I believe the answer is someplace else, and it's buried back in a Commonwealth Court decision some years ago, which I don't have the right database to find, so I shouldn't talk before I have a few facts. But it really sucks that you're paying substitutes $79,000 more than you're paying regular people. The reason you're doing this is you paid people for service that they never rendered to the Eastern School District in the first place. If you hired somebody's buddy from Banger and gave him credit for that service, he wasn't on your seniority list and he got riffed, but he was way up on the top of your payroll list, okay? You all understand that. So when he comes back onboard, he gets the benefit of the past sins of the person that hired him. Now, I don't know how to correct the past sins of the person that hired him, and I don't blame the individual, but I sure think you would be a lot smarter in the future, that you stop having sins, if and when you ever hire anybody again, from the wide-open spaces, because to pay for service not rendered to Eastern creates this very, very long, very, very expensive tale that other people say must be honored. And I'm not disputing whether we honor it or not. I think it's there. Your solicitor, if I tell me I'm right, we have to eat it, but you ought to stop eating it. And the way to stop eating it is hire people with zero to one year of experience. And besides, if you hire them with that, you don't get stuck with tenure problems quite as fast, and you get a chance to check them out. And the way to do that is to hire from your substitute pool, because it amounts to the equivalent of a intern program, and you can check them out. And then if you hire a turkey, it's your fault, but you get a chance to check out what's going on, and it probably gives you a better substitute pool. And I would suggest that you might even pay the substitutes, I mean, the ones that are getting the $80, $100, a little bit more, and do more for them, and use that as your only recruiting resource, absent not having anybody in the pool. But seriously, you are paying bad news for the sins of sloppy hiring practices in the past, and I appreciate the couple of people that gave me contract insight, but I think we're wasting our time, that our soul has been sold. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Thanks.
Mr. President, I'd just like to state something. Mr. Anderson, my two terms are city treasurer and tax collector. You know I didn't take any benefits from the school district.
Oh, I know. But you and I discussed, it was a loophole.
Yeah.
That some others had done.
Done, right. I did not do that.
That's why they closed it.
Because I was already in the Beesers.
Dr. Volcano, you were one of the few friends the school district had at the time. Others sold the school district down the river.
Yeah, well, I didn't do that, that's for sure.
Thank you. Anyone else see? I'm not seeing any other hands. So moving on with the agenda. We need a motion to approve the Minnesota list of 23 to 13.
Motion.
Second.
Motion in the second. All those who favor I.
Aye.
I'm sorry, I should have taken number nine, all the executive sessions. And if I can, I can take 10, all the personnel as listed. 11 is the field trip approval. 12 is finance, paying our bills, we've got to pay those things. And then I'll stop before I hit 13.
Motion.
Second.
Motion in the second. Discussion on any of them, questions?
Mr. Simonetta, I didn't have an opportunity to call you this week for our usual discussion about the bills, but I do have a few questions, especially about the one that keeps showing up, that we've talked about several times, several months in a row.
Meeting?
Yeah. So any information about that that you have?
We're meeting with the representatives, this is for symptoms, laundry, and looking at the contract that has been in existence before we all came aboard, and the outlaws and necessity and the procedures, if we don't, we can just get through that. We are looking at it.
Okay.
In the meantime, just.
Okay.
In the meantime, just.
Thank you.
Other questions? Well, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Under miscellaneous, I'm going to take it a little bit out of C-section. By added B, which was a special ed supplement, and I'd like to have a motion for that one.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Basically, there's no comments on those types of items, so all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Which brings us down to the voting districts, and I kept it open so that we could have some discussion here. We have, this is something that we don't necessarily have to vote on tonight, but I wanted to open discussion on it, but by next week, we should vote on it and finalize it, because we have to get the approvals to the county and everything to get the adjustments made in time for next year's elections. And, you know, John Sperms did a lot of work on this, looked at it. I believe everybody has a copy of the maps and everything, so you can see graphically how the changes were made. You can see how the numbers balance and everything. And I want one thing, Mr. Riley is not here tonight, and there's a couple ties, so I want to bring it together. One thing Mr. Riley added, and it's not totally tied to this, but I want to throw it in because I know it would be a point if we want to bring it up later, and that is, he said, "Should we have, instead of, you know, three people in each region or whatever, should we have more of a..."
At-large.
Yes. And the other discussion, just to make clear, is, earlier this year, we did change one voting district, which Barron is in, and where next year in the election, that will be the one seat that is open, which then becomes a four-year term, so that now the regions are also balancing as far as how they're voting, so you don't have a full term in each region. As I said, those two are just ancillary pieces and everything, but just, you know, we review one, put the other one on the table for a future discussion. But right now, the real issue comes down to the voting districts and looking at the map. And I'd like to open it up if there's questions, concerns, thoughts.
Mr. President, I know you don't need a vote today, as the way the new map is drawn here, which pretty much makes it more even, numbers of representation. I like the map the way it is now. I don't know anybody else's feelings on it, but I think it kind of balances out responsibility in all the districts. Does anybody, can we vote on that today?
Absolutely, but I wanted to make sure we had discussion on this first and everything, if there was any thoughts, any concerns.
I would hold that off, to vote on it. My concern is, first of all, what Mr. Riley proposed, we have to have three members from each district. That's state law. If you have, you know, that's the balance. And what Mr. Riley wants to say is that if this district has more votes in it, then they should have four, and this one should have two, and basically, that, we can't do that. I mean, they've got to be balanced.
But that doesn't, Dr. Volcano, that doesn't have to do with this. That's something we could tackle at a later date. I'm talking about voting on.
Yeah, I'll be honest with you, I don't think I ever received that.
You can have mine, it's very simple.
Yeah.
It's on the agenda as an attachment.
It is?
Yeah.
On your computer.
Oh, I didn't, okay. Well, under the circumstances of my illness, it's been hard for me.
If you look at the green, Region 2, which you and myself are in, we would pick up, what I thought we should always have was the rest of the West Ward. And that's what, that's what you'll see there, so I think it's, I mean, my opinion, it's a good idea, we're picking up more. I mean, we were really low with what we lost Regalsville, $12,000. That'll bring us up to be more fair with, or more in line with Palmer and Forks.
Can I make a comment on this?
We're already in the West Ward, so I think it makes sense.
How about, let's, let John make a comment, because this group worked on the numbers.
Yeah, thank you, Bob. Yeah, this current configuration, I will say, gives us a remarkable closeness in terms of error, and that is, basically, it's, the law is pretty, you know, easy to appreciate. The region's supposed to be as close as possible in population, but in no event, no more than, no more than 10% error. And before this, or I should say currently, we have a, in District 1, a 9.15% error, and District 2 has a really horrendous 39.1% error, and District 3 also rather high, 30% error. And this configuration, which kind of really just fits in kind of neatly, gives us the best configuration that we could figure out. We have a, in the office, a computer program that we developed that selected three or four possibilities. This one gives us a 1.5% error in District 1, a 2.2% error in District 2, and a .78% error in District 3, which is remarkably close. So, this is the best configuration that we could find, given the parameters and the limitations that the law allowed. And one of those things is that we cannot break up voting districts, so voting districts have to remain intact.
Right.
And also, although it's not a part of the law, certainly, it was reasonable to try as much as possible not to break up municipalities, although that's impossible to do, but, and to try to keep them contiguous. Although the law does not strictly require that they be contiguous, it would certainly be suspect if we had, you know, something here, and then something here, and something there, just to achieve mathematical purity. So, this configuration does come very, very close to equality among the three.
Yeah, the map, to me, looks, Mr. President, looks like there's no gerrymandering.
Right.
I mean, that's, I think that's important to our citizens, that we don't gerrymander, and this doesn't look like it. I mean, this is, this has kept municipalities, except for Cotton Hill, which is very close to the Forks. I mean, it's almost, it seems like it's part of Forks.
Right.
You go up over the hill, and you're in Forks. This looks really good, but I would still say, let's table it to next Tuesday and vote on it then, so everybody can look at it closer.
It's actually next Monday, the meeting.
Well, next Monday is the committee meeting.
Right.
The voting is next Tuesday, right?
No, there is no meeting next Tuesday. Everything's next Monday evening.
Oh, okay, but that changed then.
Mr. President, I just, unless anybody else has objections, I don't see a reason why you can't be voted.
I want to see if there's any other questions first, Bob.
There's no harm, you know, to wait till Monday, I don't think. What I'm curious about is, is this driven only every 10 years by the official census?
No.
No, okay.
No, no, it's driven, it's driven by the change in the demography of the various districts, and once they get out of line, they need to be reconfigured.
Then that would suggest to me that we've been out of balance for quite some time.
Yes.
That's right.
Given the rapid growth of Forks.
You're absolutely right.
Dr. Masai.
So, who fell asleep at the wheel?
No. Mr. President, basically, it's changed with the U.S. Census. It's not...
It can be changed with the census. It's not configured with the census in terms of the statute there to be maintained as equal as possible. And occasionally, when a group of citizens, or anyone with standing says, "Hey, there's something wrong here," they can bring a petition to correct it, or the school district can self-correct, which is what's happening now.
Yeah.
So, it's not, it's not an automatic reconfiguration like it is with the legislative districts. It's not like that.
And it's, just where Dr. Masai is, it's really that nobody fell asleep. It's just something that the board is now looking at to reconfigure.
Oh, it was also precipitated by the fact that we lost Regalsville.
Right, yes, that's correct.
So, I mean, that really was implied, it entered the pod.
Right. That started the process.
Well, it was Regalsville, Mr. Kusick on county council.
Right.
Because he brought up a couple areas. That also precipitated a look at it.
My wife had contacted Mr. Fruin and said that it's, you know, "I want you to know it's way out of bounds," and so forth, so I would want you to know that. I had nothing to do with it, because I didn't speak to him at all about it. That was, hey, my wife has her own, has her own opinions, and she's, you know...
We'd be happy to have her opinion match what we had already come up with.
Right, yes.
What I meant by falling asleep at the wheel, if you have a real process, that means you have a periodic review. Period. That's not at the whim of, "Hey, I thought about it," or, it's not going to be every year that a Regalsville gets dropped, we don't think.
Right.
Be a good idea for the policy committee, Dr. Masai.
So, what I really like, your software program is brilliant if you're within 1% on each of these, and they're all contiguous, it seems quite logical. I can see why Mr. Pennebode wants to rush to judgment.
Well, I don't want to rush, but many of these money, we don't vote on people.
But I would think the bigger issue is the issue of at-large seats. Bethlehem does that. I don't know what the prevailing law is and what we think should be done.
Could tell you...
How is that teed up or debated?
Well, I could tell you, with the caveat that I'm doing this off the cuff, there's several alternatives. One is that you can have an at-large district. You can have it broken up into three districts, or you could have a hybrid of three. In other words, you could have, I think it's, is it two from each, and then have some, if it's two from each, we'd give you a six, what, three elected at large, or something to that effect. I think, although I'm not sure that's available with our classification, I think you could have nine districts, but that wouldn't really apply to us very well. So, those are the options that are, that are in the code. I would want to say one thing, that we do have this constraint, and that is that before this is corrected, and to be effective, it has to be, you know, in the hands of the board election first thing in January. We do have to go to court, get the Court of Appeals, or Court of Common Pleas in North Appton County to approve it. That's not a difficult process, but it does require advertising, so it would take us three weeks to get that accomplished, and we certainly wouldn't anticipate any opposition. It's merely a procedure that we have to go through.
So, what would the process be of having at-large? As terms ended, would you move to this in a staggered fashion?
Yes. You could. Yeah. So, that becomes, that's why I said, they're not really tied together. It's the type of thing, we can continue that discussion next year, and then, because then, for two years out, that's when you can start to do that, and it would be a total of four years, you know, over four years because of every other election cycle and everything, and you would have it implemented.
Mr. President, I would be totally against at-large, simply because in Bethlehem, the problem in Bethlehem is that there's some areas that sort of get redlined. In other words, you go at-large, you have people turning out from, just say, Southside and Forks in one year, and Palmer doesn't turn out, so they don't get any seats, because the others. What we have to do as a board is make sure that all the areas are represented. And when we go to regional seats, like we have now, every area is represented. If we go to at-large, it depends who turns out, who wins. Now, what happens if we have everybody coming from Forks and Palmer and South, you know, Easton didn't turn out, so Easton gets no votes? So, they don't have, they're not stakeholders anymore. And so, this way, everybody's a stakeholder, because they all have three votes. And we operated in that since about 1960. And to go at-large, I know there's problems in Bethlehem with the at-large system, because some people feel that they've been kicked out of the system. And I, you know, I, even though that's an idea, but I'm against it, because some people would not be represented.
Again, I want to take them as separate, but I wanted to put that out there, because I knew that was something Mr. Riley had. So, I mean, for tonight slash for next week, is this idea on approving this map? That is the only, that's the issue we have to vote on currently.
Right.
Because that holds true whether you go at-large or not at-large.
Right.
So, the only discussion and point, I don't know if there's other questions or comments this evening, is a motion to do something.
Yeah, and we would not be able to do that this year. It would be, it would be really close to do that, go to the county and everything. Petitions come out in the first week, I think, or second week in February, and so we're changing everything too quick.
That's why I said, it's the type of thing, discussion next year for something that happens the following set of elections.
But it still holds up what I said, is that depending who turns out, you get, you get more seats from one area than you get from another area, and we disenfranchise some of the, a lot of the voters.
Right. So, that, but that's not the issue this evening. The issue this evening is the map, and it's, you know, what is the wish of the board on the map as far as where do we go? So, I'll entertain any kind of a motion, whatever you want to do.
Mr. President, I make a motion to pass the map, the new map, as it was redrawn tonight, for tonight's meeting.
Okay.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any other comments? If not, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
I can proceed to...
You can proceed to petition the court.
Yeah.
Okay, the...
I will go along with that tonight, because seeing this, I think it's okay.
Okay. Last but not least, are there any public comments on non-agenda-type items? Drew?
We're about to start the season of woe is me, we have no budget, we need to clean house, and lighten the ship. And I've always been a proponent of lightening the ship at the top, because you save more money, and you save more jobs by getting people off the top. But let me give you an example, hypothetical, but not so hypothetical. Educators tend to be conservative, they're coached to bank sick leave and personal days for a rainy day, and some of them actually do it, and they bank. So, let's hypothetically assume that you've got $80,000 worth of stuff banked. And the people on this side of the room have a good lawyer, and they go out, and they do a dance through the federal tax code, the state tax code, and they get an opinion letter from the State Department of Revenue that says, "If we do the dance, we don't pay any local taxes, we don't pay any state taxes, we don't pay any FICA, and we're really proud of ourselves, because we saved a lot of money." Okay? And while they're doing the dance, they don't pay attention to what they're doing, because the employer doesn't give them 100% of $80,000, as some do, doesn't give them 50% of $80,000, as some do, it gives them 25% of $80,000, which is 20 last time I worked. Now, the people on this side of the room, they're equally smart, and they've got an equally smart lawyer, and he says, "No dance, no shimmy, no fall to law." One or two simple sentences that says, "I can cash out my leave when I so choose a salary," and they pay taxes, they pay into the PSER system, they pay in FICA, and they get a big slice taken off the top. But they get $80,000 minus the big slice, which roughly speaking is $64,000. Now, I'm not very good at math, but I think 64 is better than 20, seven days a week, just in case you want to move from that side of the room over to this side of the room. Now, let me throw one other wrinkle into the thing. The state, at no additional cost to the district or the individual, says, "Everybody on this side of the room is going to get an annuity that would cost them roughly, if they did it pre-tax, $700,000 to $800,000 to buy. We're going to give it to you." Now, we could argue annuity figures, and sex-based, and age-based, and some other benefits, but whatever you argue, it is one, one big number for that annuity. And the annuity pays roughly $24,000 a year. So, for every year forever, I make more money to sit over here than you guys got over here in the first day. Now, I want to ask you a question. How many people want to move over to this side of the room? Now, I'm not saying it's easy to move over to this side of the room. It may take two sentences in a contract to do it, and I think there's people that are smart enough to do it. I also think that there's places between these two that can be done with the right kind of legal talent. And I'm repeating again, the state has a way of tweaking the formula. It ain't free. But the point is, you don't pay it directly, the individual doesn't pay it directly, and God made the rules, and we didn't. There are other ways to tweak the formula to lighten the ship, and different people get motivated different ways. My daughter has a friend, he loves to teach. The guy talked till he was 99 years old. You could not have paid him to move aside. I've got some friends that are in their early 50s, and they've got a computer program with a number of hours until they can leave. And there are people all points in between. And an attorney may look at it one way, and a psychologist may look at it another way, and an accountant may look at it another way, and I'm looking at it a pragmatic sense. If I throw it against the wall and...
And there are people all points in between. And an attorney may look at it one way, and a psychologist may look at it another way, and an accountant may look at it another way, and I'm looking at it a pragmatic sense. If I throw it against the wall and it sticks and enough people vote on it, I win. So that if the ship gets lightened, you win, I win. It won't be perfect, a couple people will manipulate the system to come out ahead, a couple people will manipulate it, forget to get it done, and they'll be left behind. But I think you're going to go through the drill, and I think to lighten the ship from the top needs to be in the back of your mind. And the one thing I caution is, you've got to plan ahead, because the state pretty much says, and I've read through some of the cases, "If you do it at the end, we're going to give it a big veto." Now, there are some other school districts that wrote long epistles on how to do...